Wings to Go in Greenville where every order is a custom order made with fresh ingredients. Wings to Go, 7818 Wesley Street in Greenville. Simply great wings.
Need a part for the right price? Look for that red and blue sign. Henley Auto Supply at 1510 Stonewall. Over 800,000 Carquest parts to choose from. Domestic, European, and Asian parts. Henley Auto Supply at 903-455-1969. 455-1969. Henley Auto Supply has the right parts to keep your vehicle running and backed by the best hometown service. Henley Auto Supply. Great people, great products, great prices. Henley Auto Supply and Carquest.
Sorry, we're a little late this evening. I want to welcome everybody to the council meeting and please stand for the invocation by Pastor Rick Pretiman with the Christ Community Church. Thank you for coming today.
Please join me in prayer. Father, we come this evening thankful for many things, thankful for who you are. Father, thankful that you are God that we're not. Father, we also come lifting up our community to you, asking for your continued blessing. Father, we ask for mercy on those who are fighting this COVID virus. We ask for grace and comfort for those who have suffered loss. Father, we ask for grace in our own interactions with one another, knowing that differing opinions and perspectives can create conflict and division. We ask that you give us a special sense of grace and care for one another in our community. Father, I come also giving thanks for our city council for the sacrifice that they make to serve, the sacrifice that their family members make so that they can be here. Father, thank you for the blessing that they are to our community. We ask that you would guide them tonight and always give them wisdom and discernment as they seek to make decisions that are best for our community. And Father, we ask that from the decisions made this evening and Father, just in our community as a whole, that you would be glorified and Father, that and each of us would receive the good from your hand. We thank you and we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There are no presentations tonight. I want to please, there are two placeholders in your, in the agenda if you have one for citizens to be heard. Citizens are invited to address the council on topics that are either scheduled for public hearing or not on the agenda and also public testimony for items that are on the agenda tonight, beginning with ordinance at 7A. If you'd like to address the council on any of those issues, please submit a citizen's comment, comment card to the city secretary. Are there citizens to be heard?
Yes, John Turner.
Thank you. Mayor, City Council. My name is John Turner. My home address is 3702 Pepperport Drive, Greenville. Tonight, I'm speaking about my disabled American Veterans Building, basically at 2502 Church Street. I'm requesting a letter of approval from the city council to hold bingo at the American Legion Building, one day a week. Profits after expenses will be sent to the DAV Treasury or dispersal to our veterans. As soon as and if we get the letter, Mr. Chris Watson, which I delineated on this letter, will contact the state, get their approval, go down for training, get all the required stuff that's needed, and get started up with that. My second and third point is, and I know I'm preaching to the choir because I know there's a lack of asphalt and different things here, but District 3 in particular is really lacking in filling up potholes, especially the area over there on Colorado Street because now Colorado Street's become a great thoroughfare. And they've even got those big trucks going in through there once in a while. I've seen them several times. And Colorado and everything between Dale and Colorado is a complete mess, all those streets. They were bad before, but they're worse even, even worse now. And we've got a whole bunch of gullies that really need cleaning out. They are very, very bad. They're jungles for snakes, mosquitoes, rats, the whole nine yards. And they're in pretty dense neighborhoods over there in that area. They're throughout the whole district, not only in District 3, they're throughout the whole city. So that needs to be looked at as well. I just appreciate, so I want to take a look at it when you get a chance and when you get some asphalt and when you get some concrete to fix those two places on Shelby and Nashville. And I appreciate everything. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have you submitted your request in letter form to the city secretary?
I gave it to her today.
Okay, good.
And I believe you all have a copy of it.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Thank you very much. We all speak, I guess, on behalf of the Transportation Committee. We've been meeting on a regular basis on potholes and utility cuts and milling overlay and also just connector streets. So we're very focused on it and I hope you'll see some improvement in the near future.
Yes, sir. As I said, I was preaching to the choir.
Thank you.
Andre Hernandez.
How are y'all doing today? I'm not here with like a request or anything.
Could you speak into this? I don't think we can.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, that's better.
I was invited here to, I really was here to just make an announcement, it wasn't like a request or anything like that. I work at the Smokehouse in downtown Greenville, now known as Smokehouse and Market. It used to be known as Johnson Street Smokehouse, but we have new ownership since December. And I wanted to let y'all know that we're working harder every day to improve our food and improve our service for everybody. And for the holidays, we will be having hams and turkeys, hopefully. The economy's been going kind of nuts on us, so we're trying to find a good supplier for that. But if y'all want to bring us your own turkeys and your own hams and your meat, I will smoke anything that has a USDA stamp on it. So if y'all want to come visit me at Johnson Street Downtown, I will cook anything for you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
James Evans, 6410 Buena Vista Drive, Greenville, Texas, 75402. I want to give you an update on Waste Connections service in my neighborhood. Tuesday of last week, heard the truck out front, looked out the window, and when the arm set the green monster back in the pavement right there in front of my house, it tipped over. And the driver instantly jumped out, set the thing back upright, rolled it up on my driveway. I wanted to go out and thank him, so I ran out the back door and he was already down the street. And I hooked it as hard as I could and I caught him because at the next or two houses down, when he was picking that one up, he was also out of the truck, not to upright the ken, but he was picking up a squashed pizza delivery box that was on the ground out there near the trash ken. He picked it up and put it up in the cap. So again, Waste Connections, I called juice immediately and reported to them, find out who the driver was and say thank you to him personally again. But again, Waste Connections in my neighborhood is A++ and I just want to give them credit for that. The next thing is, last week one night, I was at Jack Ammon's house looking at his collection of downtown Greenville. And I know we're looking at revitalizing downtown Greenville, it's very important to me. I grew up, massive growth, things taking place every day down in downtown Greenville. You could buy new cars, grocery shop, buy anything, it was great. And things again deteriorated and we started looking at ways to improve it. I know we've got this on the 10-year plan and again, the last 10-year plan I went to, I wasn't very happy with the progress being made on the 10-year plan. It may be 11 years before it gets completed, I think. And I'm glad to see that you formed a special commission, board or whatever to look at downtown Greenville. The thing I want to call your attention though is this, I met with another friend one day last week and in less than 15 minutes, we made a list, it's a good list, of over 40 million with an M, 40 million dollars since 1990 that this city has devoted to the Lee Street, Washington Street areas of downtown, in excess of 40 million. If we'd had 20 or 30 minutes, we might have made that more. All I want to do is leave you tonight with this quote Albert Einstein used many times. "The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result." The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. Let's look at what's happened in the past and let's see if we can get this committee to do it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Good evening, Byron Taylor, 5106 Meadowbrook, Greenville, Texas.
You can pull it up if you don't want to bend over.
I wanted to bring something to attention that has been going on in my neighborhood for quite some time. And now that Stonewall's done, I'm a little concerned about it. Years ago, the shopping center that, where Stonewall is the, is the back where the fence is, on their perimeter of their fence, all the way down Canton Street and along Stonewall, they've always kept those bushes trimmed. That was about six years ago. During, when I was president of Keep Growing Beautiful, I would pick up the trash in that area. And at some point, something changed and they stopped trimming those bushes that they have there and they let them grow all the way to the ground. When I started having to pick the trash out of the bushes, I went to code enforcement and asked who owns the bushes. They've always kept them up. And I was told that the shopping center owns those bushes, but if they didn't trim them, code enforcement would take care of it. And since then, nothing's happened. And then when Stonewall was being redone, I kind of just ignored all that. But now that Stonewall is done, they have not only been not trimmed, but if you drive down Canton Street, I was noticing that there was about three bags of household trash there for about two or three weeks. I finally got out and looked. There's a homeless encampment, encampment behind the bushes there on Canton Street between Cavenders and the back of that shopping center. And these are the kind of things that I'm talking about when we, when I'm asking y'all to go out and look at your areas and stuff because there's a lot of things that people are seeing when they move here. There's a lot of people on social media that immediately get on social media and say, I'm brand new here, what do I do, where do I go, what do I want to see? And I'm really concerned about them being, looking at the beautification of our city and not finding things like this. So I'd like to see some follow-up with that in regards to me reporting it some time ago, but I'm not quite sure who's responsible, but I would appreciate it if y'all would look into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
That's all.
Okay. Moving on, there are no public hearings scheduled tonight. We'll move on to ordinance 7A, consideration in action on an ordinance authorizing purchase of Austin Park playground equipment. Brent?
Mayor, Council, good evening. This is a consideration in action on purchasing playground equipment for Austin Park as well as putting a basketball court there. This was back in September 14th. You guys allocated $320,000 towards the development of this, this park site. And on September 30th, we held a kind of a public meeting with some of the people in the neighborhood over there and kind of did a presentation and let them have some input into some of the playground equipment that we're going to do. And so this is kind of the presentation we gave them, the final product. So it is the old Austin School Building, Police Courts Building. So this is the way it currently looks now. We're looking for a way to continue use of that existing sign out front. It is granite, so we think we can sand it down and have some stuff etched into there for Austin Park and the new city logo. Some information, it's two acres, it's classified as a neighborhood park. In Greenville, our neighborhood parks serve about 7,250 residents. And so typically, our neighborhood parks will consist of playgrounds for five to 12 with ADA accessibility, a basketball court, and a small walking trail. So here's kind of the master plan that we have laid out for this facility. We have the existing parking lot up there on the north end, it's still in pretty good shape. We're going to run wooden posts around that, round top posts around that, just to keep people from driving through there. And then just have a simple playground there out front, still in kind of the shade of the trees with a little shade canopy there for the parents around the playground. And then there, the existing police building that's there, what we're looking to do is we believe, it's still structure, we believe we can take the walls off of it and still utilize it as a covered shelter, like a pavilion. So it is concrete flooring, so. And then the basketball court, which the commit, in the public meeting, they did state they wanted that basketball court over on the other side of that pavilion. And so that works for us too. We would just run fence along that street to kind of block balls running out into the street, kids chasing after those, those basketballs, so. And this is the playground that, we gave them three options and this was the playground that was, that they, they liked as well as our staff liked. So it's got a lot of playability to it, a lot of different features. This playground's larger than typically what you can get for, in the hundred thousand dollar range. And it's very modern in terms of the robes, the playability with those guidelines and all the different features of it. So it does meet all ADA acceptability. There's some play functionality along the base of this play structure. And then we've got the standalone unit that we're going to test out here that is for ADA kids with disabilities in terms of all kids. Anybody can play in that. It's kind of a swing that, that really is, looks like it's going to be a lot better than previous versions that they've had, so. And then kind of the timeline on this, as we've started trimming trees here in the next couple of weeks, we're going to get the parking lot post in and then begin demo of the building, install playground and basketball, and hope to be completed by March 4th. So we think we can be done by March 4th, depending on the playground getting here could be problematic, so with issues going on, so. Any questions from the council? If not, city or staff's recommendation is to approve the ordinance in the amount of 169,892 to child's play.
Brett, what is the, excuse me, the consistency of that grant, the base of that playground? In the picture, it's hard to tell. Yeah, what is that?
Well, the picture, that's poured in place rubber surface. We, what we'll use is 5R. It's an engineered wood fiber that meets all ADA standards and is, keeps things like fire or anything else from happening. It's not a real wood, it looks wood, but it's not, so. But it does, it packs down really good and deteriorates and then we just put new mulch in on top of it, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And this will be easily accessible for those who may use like a motorized scooter or a wheelchair?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, there's a ramp going into the play, the play surface and they can wheel all around, around the facility. And there's some functionality on the outside of the play structure.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? So it is, it's certainly functional for a handicapped child.
Yes.
Okay, if there are no questions, I'll open this up for public testimony. Is there any, anyone like, is there any public testimony on this issue? If not, what is the pleasure of the council regarding this issue?
I would make a motion to accept Brett's proposal.
There's a motion, is there a second? A second. Please vote. Thank you, Brent, that was a good presentation. You're up next again, you know. Here comes item 7B, which is consideration ordinance for a shade structure.
Yes, sir, this is concerning, part of, items that were part of the budget, this year's budget that was approved. And this will be the shade structure for Maroon Field, which will have one more left after this, next year, Orange Field. And this will be resurfacing the basketball court out there and putting in updated basketball goals, so. And the total cost of that's going to be 62,706, which we were surprised that the price didn't go up, so.
Any questions for Brett regarding this issue? If there are no questions, I'll open up the public testimony. Is there no public testimony? Being no public testimony, is there, what is the pleasure of the council? Move to approve?
I second.
Motion second, please vote. I voted and it passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to item C, consideration action ordinance accepting awarding bid for a cyber liability insurance. a Cyber Liability Insurance Coverage. Carrie?
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Thank you. I'm here to talk about consideration in action for awarding a bid for cyber liability insurance. Our current provider, which is Corvus, has declined to renew. The reason being is that a lot of insurance companies are declining to offer cyber liability insurance to municipalities because there's been an increase in cyber ransomware, things of that nature. So we didn't have a whole lot to choose from, but we did get one bid from Crum and Foster, or Forster. And unfortunately, the bid was double what we're normally paying. So I would recommend that we accept this bid so that we make sure we have the proper cyber coverage in the event that we get attacked.
Are there any questions?
I just have one. Carrie, I saw in the proposal that JUICE has broken out separately from the city and obviously their board is going to approve their portion of the premium.
That is correct.
But they have given a tentative agreement to go ahead and go along with this?
Yes, yes, yes. They, I think what JUICE is going to do is lower the liability coverage. This is a $3 million policy. I think they're going to two.
Okay, thank you.
I also had a question. So for the coverage that a policy like this would provide, what's the difference between this and what would be provided by like our umbrella liability and those kinds of things? What's, what makes this special as opposed to any other?
Well, our TML insurance is basically a minimal policy that would probably cover our deductibles and things of that nature. This is a supplemental insurance that will take care of the majority of the potential problems. So this particular insurance is actually more involved than the TML insurance.
Are there any, any other questions?
What kind of dollar amount are we talking about here?
Last year, our policy was about $34,700, and now the bid is at $63,006.
What is the liability limit? Two million, you said?
Three.
Three million?
Three million, mhm.
What happens next year when no insurance providers will carry this?
I hope that doesn't happen. I don't have an answer for that.
It's pretty hard to look. No. Do you have more questions, Ben?
Right.
Any other questions? Okay, if there are no other questions, I'll open this up for public testimony. Is there any public testimony? There being no public testimony, what is the pleasure of the council? Move to approve?
I second.
Motion second, please vote. And motion approves, is approved unanimously. Moving on to 7D, Consideration in Action on an Ordinance Authorizing the Purchase of New Shelving Units and Accessories for the Library. Olivia, how are you tonight?
Doing all right. Evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, this is to authorize the purchase of our additional shelving for the library is approved in this current year's budget. This is for the shelving itself, and there's a separate charge, they're invoicing separately for actually moving our shelving in the library to accommodate the space these new shelves are going to need. The cost for the shelving itself is $51,234.87. And even with the additional cost of moving the shelving and the new surcharges on steel, it has fallen into the amount approved by council to do this this year. And upon approval, they should be able to schedule an install in early January. Anybody have any questions?
Olivia, this new shelving, everything, this is going to alleviate your concerns you mentioned during budget about ADA access to the shelves?
Yes. That part is not the shelving unit itself, it's the spacing between the shelves. But yes, the entire project encompasses making that throughout the library accessible. We have some now that are right on the edge where it's not exactly the spacing we need between, so it solves that issue as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Are there any other, any other questions? Okay, open this up for public testimony. Is there any public testimony? Yes, Mr. Taylor?
This is something else I've been saving up for a while, but I meant to come when Olivia was doing her budget, but I wasn't able to make it that night. So the library is a beautiful building architecturally. I wasn't here when, I know the person's name is on there, I'm assuming he played a big role in funding the hospital, I mean, that building, but it's really beautiful architecturally and it's also very beautiful. If you're sitting at Stonewall, looking, you know, towards Super 1 and looking, you see the back of the building. The entrance that's used very commonly, it looks very great, but over time, the rear, if you look at it after I tell you this, the rear door and the shrubbery and the trees and everything along the backside has become very overgrown, and also there's a lot of mold and stuff. And that's the part you see from '69. So again, we have new people moving here, they're seeing things for the first time. And if we could have somebody take a look at that, that would also be great.
Thank you. Is there any further public testimony? There not being, is what is the pleasure of the council regarding 7D?
I make a motion to approve.
I have a second.
Motion second, please vote. Okay, the next item is 8A, Consideration Action on a Resolution Authorizing the Participation Regarding an Opioid Settlement. Daniel, would you be kind enough to give the audience a Cliff Notes version of what we're doing here, please?
Yes. This relates to the global opioid crisis that's come out, come about over the past 10 years or so. The Attorney General of our state and the Attorneys General of many other states have been negotiating with people who either manufactured the drug or distributed it or marketed it. And they've reached a settlement for Texas cases. If Greenville signs on to the settlement that's been negotiated and everybody else also signs on, all the cities and the counties, then Greenville will receive about $200,000. Signing on isn't a guarantee that there's going to be any money that comes from that. It could, if half of the cities and counties by population don't sign on, that money could go down to about $66,000. If more than half of them don't sign on, then we're going to get $0. Number one, because the settlement's going to fall through, and number two, because all those companies are almost certainly going to file for bankruptcy protection and be able to extinguish that debt, or extinguish the ongoing lawsuit. And so unfortunately, from the extensive information that the Attorney General has provided in their push to get all the cities and counties to sign this, there's still no way to tell for certain how much money or if there is going to be money. The Attorney General is very clearly pushing hard to get this to happen and to get all of the cities and counties to sign on, because the more people that sign on, the more money that each individual jurisdiction gets, and the quicker they get it. It could be, if everybody signs on, all of the money would be paid in about a two-year period, which is good for us because it also prevents them from running into a situation with a state that's pushing harder, and there's several, and pushing them into bankruptcy anyway. So the state is asking that we sign this, and the Attorney General is pushing very hard to do it. If they, if everybody, if enough people sign on and money comes to the city of Greenville or Hunt County, which between the two of them can get about $500,000, all that money has to be spent on remediation of the problem. So drug treatment programs and healthcare related things. We don't know fully yet what the list of those potential spending possibilities is going to be, because they haven't been written yet. They're not going to be written unless enough people sign on to make this settlement work. But there are some guidelines, and they really come down to what the other states and the federal government have approved for remediation strategies to attack the crisis and prevent more people from getting hooked and successfully treat the people who have been, become addicted to opioids in a way that makes meaningful differences to our taxpayers when it comes time to pay for police and healthcare.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Daniel regarding this item? Is there any public testimony? No public testimony? Okay, what is the pleasure of the council regarding this resolution?
Move to approve?
For a second?
Second.
Second. All vote, please. And it passes unanimously. City Secretary, read the consent calendar, please.
City Council meeting minutes from September 28th. Resolution approving a new voting system purchased by Hunt County and an ordinance authorizing a mutual aid agreement between the city of Greenville and Hunt County for fire protection services.
Okay, are there any questions regarding the consent calendar? If there are no questions, is there any public testimony regarding this issue? If not, what is the pleasure of the council regarding the consent calendar?
Make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
Okay.
I second.
Motion second, please vote. And it passes unanimously. City staff reports, first of all, Teen Advisory Committee, Brett?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Something that our staff deal with for the last several years is no, not many activities for teens or some of our programs weren't geared for teens. And so our staff over the last several months has been trying to find something that would help, help us grow programs that would involve teens. So something that we came up with was TAC, the Teen Advisory Committee. And basically, they act as a board, and they would work with our staff in terms of developing teen programs, teen events, things like that. And more importantly for us, they go out and they help recruit people to those events. So no matter how young I feel, apparently I don't look as young as I think I do, so. So maybe if these teens go out and recruit, that'll kind of help us grow those programs. You know, and it's a process that would be, it'd work with the school year, it'd start, and when school started and run through the end of school. And, you know, we'd give them a shirt, they would meet once a week and work with our special events people on devising some events that are geared towards teens, whether it's something Reese Davis, sand volleyball courts, you know, things like that, so. And we pretty much, I think, got it, got it completed and ready to go. We'll just move it to next, next school year and get ready to unleash it next school year, so.
Any questions regarding this? Okay. Thank you. A number of council members attended the Texas Municipal League Annual Convention in Houston this past week. Carla was our tour guide, she did a great job on that. Thank you, Carla. And I think, I'd like to go around the table. Typically, we do this, I think it's a requirement, and start with place one and just give your ideas about what you saw, what you thought of the convention, that sort of thing. So just go around the table.
Thanks, Mayor. Kudos to Carla again. Besides walking 250 miles in four days, had to get there before Kenneth got there. That's the largest convention center I think I've seen in my life, walking end to end to that thing. We looked at our watches and I think we were averaging 5.7 miles a day and more. But very, very informative, there were some wonderful speakers. A couple of things that came out of there for me that were very interesting, and I think something we ought to pursue is water issues. We know how important our water things, water issues are and dilemmas are, and we are actively pursuing those. But they came up with some things down there about water meters that they tried in a couple of different cities that worked very, very well. That was one of the most intriguing things that I enjoyed. And I think the mayor and I are going to look further into that along with help from some other council members. And the other thing I really enjoyed was the outlook from a professional retail exec that gave a really nice 45-minute presentation on his view of where we're going with retail sales. And it definitely will affect Greenville. If you heard some of the comments he made, they were very intriguing. So overall, a wonderful, wonderful experience down there, looking forward to doing it again. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll mirror a lot of Councilmember Thomas's comment. I found that the interactions with the other cities and discussions on the use, their intended uses of the American Relief Act funds to be very informative. I thought it was very beneficial to see the knowledge gained by the newer members of the council sitting through some of the Roberts Rules and the finance presentations by TML. I think they did, TML did a very good job in their presentations, and who can forget the keynote speakers? With that, I thank everyone for going, and I thank Carla and Carol for putting all the administrative side together, and all your assistance was really appreciated. Thank you.
Me? Again, mirroring what they said, it was a great learning experience. Being new in this arena, I was nervous about going, didn't know what I could bring back to the community, but I'm happy that I went. I learned a lot about the American Rescue Act and how we can, you know, tap into that. And I just learned about laws, period, that I would have never thought other cities were having issues with. I did learn that Greenville's not the only person that has issues with streets and waste. So y'all, this is a known issue across the state. Everybody is trying. I just got to say thank you to you guys, because y'all made it a lot easier to understand what's going on. So I look forward to next year.
I'll just mirror what Mr. Atkins said. It was just very helpful to sit in the presentations and get legislative updates. I went to a session on legislative updates regarding police and law enforcement, which is really informative. Like Mr. Atkins said, the presentation on city finance was very helpful to somebody who's new to city finance. And it was also really helpful to be able to meet council members from other cities, talking to staff from other cities about the challenges they face and what we're going to be facing that they've already dealt with. And so I got to have a couple of really good conversations about expanded broadband access with some people from Mont Blanc. And it was also really good to spend time with my fellow council members, to get to know y'all better. So that's, that's my takeaway.
Well, this is my first experience going down to Houston. It's been a long time since I've been down there. And I enjoyed everything except for the walking. My hip was hurting like crazy, my leg was hurting. I said, I guess I had to go and start walking before I go back down there or get me a cart going there and back. But as far as that, I really enjoyed it. The people were very friendly. Some of the city mayors and some of the city council members were very friendly, and I liked that. I enjoyed all the meetings I went to. A lot of it I didn't understand, but hopefully, when I go back, maybe I get a little bit more information to understand a lot of stuff. But I really loved it, I really did. And I thank Carla and all the council members, especially, especially helped me get back to the motel, because I was hurting bad. My leg was hurting bad. But as far as that, I enjoyed all of it, and I thank, and my wife enjoyed it too. Thank you.
I enjoyed the, I really enjoyed the convention. I was, I attended meetings or seminars on sales tax, retail sales. One of the things in retail sales is we think brick and mortar is dead. Apparently, it's not. The only negative thing they had to say is that they didn't have, he didn't, the speaker didn't have a really good outlook on movie theaters, which I noted. One of the things that I think Al and Terry mentioned was water meters. I was really intrigued by that presentation. And the city of Jacksonville had implemented a program where they had all automated water meters, including turnoffs. And during the winter storm, they were able to track and isolate, you know, leakages in their system. in their system using that, using that. There's, it's, it's really, really intriguing to me. And I think we've started doing something some with automated water meters, but I think it's something that we'll pursue and, and hopefully we may even have the, the money to do something with that in the future. So I think that was such something would have taken us into the twenty-first century. And I was a little disappointed, I, I think, in some of the speaker systems and the acoustics in the building, I don't think some of us were there and we couldn't hear. And also some of the presentations had a back, had a white background with gray letters. If you were sitting clearing the back of the presentation, you couldn't read those, or at least I couldn't. My old tired eyes couldn't read them. So anyway, but overall, I thought it was a great, a great experience. So I look forward to doing it next year. So having said that, are there any further comments on TML? If not, move to item eleven, city council discussion of proposed agenda items. Is there any discussion regarding agenda items? Yes.
Mayor, mayor, I'd like to request that we get a comprehensive street bond update at the next council meeting. I, I continue to get a lot of questions from the citizens in district two and, well, some of them are, have engineering backgrounds from our largest employers, so they're into the nuts and bolts of the thing. And also as we hear from the other districts, there's a lot of questions. And with it being six months out from the election, we need to have an update of basically where we've been, what streets have been selected, how the paver data was used to select them and where we're going, the timelines, et cetera, et cetera. So if we could have that, I would appreciate it.
At the next meeting you're asking for? Okay. Okay, are there any other requests?
I have one. I would like to put on an agenda about homeless people because they, there's an issue here in Greenville that we don't address or even think about that the homeless people are hearing and they getting, they are getting worse all the time. And we putting it on the back burner for so long and nobody even bring it up or anything like that. We need to deal with this because if we don't deal with it now, we're going to deal with it later with thievery and, and other stuff. We need to come up with something to, if we can do and put in our budget to do something about the homeless because the issue is getting bigger and bigger and we are not addressing it at all. And we need to address the issue about homeless, issues in the city of Greenville. And they are everywhere and, and, and I, I know the guy we mentioned about, over there on Stonewall, but they in, in back of the grass and other hotels and, and other facilities that they just camping out. And like you said, there's an eyesore, but still it's an eyesore, but it's still a problem that we don't want to address or deal with, that we need to address and deal with and come up with some kind of solution and how to deal with the homeless people. Because if we don't do it now, it's going to get worse and worse and we're going to have to come up with it later.
Are there any other suggestions or requests? If not, there are boards, board and commission minutes? I don't have those in your, if not, we've, there will be no executive session. We've already had executive sessions. So this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight.